Good morning. Call the October sixth, two thousand twenty city council meeting to order. Welcome everyone here today. I will call on Councilman Taylor to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you will, please stand.
Lord, thank you for this day. I pray that you give us clarity, compassion, and wisdom as we consider these items before us today. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Item three is roll call. Sandy, you see that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Pretty. Before we go any further, council, you go to new business, item four. We're going to scratch that. Not ready for that at this time, so item four and our new business, remove that from the agenda today. Approval of minutes from the September first council meeting. Those minutes were emailed out to y'all and you have a copy of them as well. There are no additions or corrections to the minutes. They'll stand approved as read. No proclamations today. Item six, invitation for public comment. Any item under first reading? If anyone wishes to speak in favor of or opposition to, raise your hand at that time and you'll be recognized. First reading, item one is a consideration of an ordinance to close and abandon a portion of Lamar Circle. I'll stand by it.
Good morning, Mayor Council.
Good morning.
You have the materials pertinent to this abandonment and closure. This is a portion of a street that was never improved. There is now a new owner that owns the rest of the properties that are situated around this cul-de-sac and they would like to abandon that so it can allow them to develop the property. That's what we requested that they do considering if they were to try to keep the lots, they would have to improve the cul-de-sac and really that would be cost prohibitive. So this has been presented to the planning commission. They are recommending approval of it to you.
Any questions for Stan?
So moved.
I have a question, if I may.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Stan, have you heard anything from the neighbors? That's my district. I have not. Have you?
No, you know, they bought these lots at pack sale and really they're the only ones impacted by the right-of-way.
Thank you.
All right, this is an item on first reading, so they're open to public hearing. If anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, recognize now. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Please second.
Mr. Pickens.
Pickens, the second?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Eight to zero.
All right. Item two is consideration of an ordinance to close and abandon a portion of Rockabilly Alley on North Church Street located downtown Jackson.
All right, so you have the materials pertinent to this request. As we discussed in pre-agenda, this is an alley or a portion of Rockabilly Alley that is situated between two pieces of property that the city of Jackson owns. By closing this portion, it will allow the city to consolidate those two tracts of land into one tract as we pursue redevelopment options for those properties.
Any questions for Stan?
Are there any utilities that run down that alley?
It was my understanding that there wasn't in that portion. So, but we will verify all that when we get farther into it. But the planning commission did recommend this to you.
So moved, Wallace.
I have a question, if I may, Stan, very quickly. Is that property for sale, Rockabilly?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. Is there a plan for it to be for sale, Mayor?
Well, this, we closed out it and make it one contiguous property, so we're going to look at redevelopment options, whether that be with CRA or Downtown Development Corporation. Help us expand our options on what we can do to rebuild that property.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, am I a block over, but is that where the fire station is playing about the museum?
Yes, it was. Then we looked at what it would take to bring that building up to code, which was just north of a million dollars. And so we, Chief Samuels said it would be more wise use of the money to look at new fire apparatus than to bring a building up to code for a million dollars.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
The motion is second. This is an item on first reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, be recognized now. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any additional questions?
I'm assuming if there are utilities that run down that, that would require an easement across that property as well.
Or relocation to the edge of the property. It just depends again on how it's redeveloped, what we would have to do if there are utilities present. And that's something we'll walk out when we get further down the road.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Council, please vote.
Motion pass unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three is a consideration of an ordinance to the city of Jackson, Tennessee, amending the FY twenty-one budget ordinance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Bob.
This proposed budget ordinance amendment today would amend the FY twenty-one budget ordinance that you all approved back during the month of June. It would amend it in a manner by adding five million dollars worth of lease purchase agreement proceeds to the capital budget. And that would enable the city to move forward in the acquisition of seven pieces of firefighting equipment for the Jackson Fire Department. That's what this amendment today would do. The lease purchase agreement itself, it's a ten-year proposed lease purchase agreement. It's with PNC Equipment Finance. Currently, the payments are projected at five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars per year for ten years. That's based on the last interest quote that we had, which was two point seven percent. The final interest quote would be determined within a week, but within seven days of closing. The plan to fund the lease payments on the lease consists of work that the Fire Department has done with their current budgeted funds that they have. They've redeveloped a staffing, a new staffing plan, and they've looked at savings from repair and maintenance costs that would come from replacing old equipment with new equipment. So the combination of that would be the funding, so it would come from budgeted funds that we currently have. Now, the amendment, the budget amendment that would be required to move those budgeted funds from currently salaries, benefits, and repair and maintenance to service, the debt service payment, that actual amendment would come when the first payment is due, which is likely in the next fiscal year.
All right, any questions? This is an item on first reading, so open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Pickens, second by Dodd. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass unanimous.
All right. Item four is consideration of proposed budget amendments. We have the Jackson Police Department, JAG grant.
Yes, this is a proposed budget amendment to recognize this year's JAG grant. Be split between the Jackson Police Department and the Madison County Sheriff's Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. This is an item on first reading. Open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass unanimous.
All right, next item in budget amendments is stormwater operations on North Parkway. And Bobby's going to discuss the finance piece, and then we'll have Dusty Mays and David Blackwood discuss the project.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, this is a proposed budget amendment to come from a fund balance for one hundred thousand dollars for the city's contribution of what is part of a larger stormwater project.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers.
Good morning.
Like Bobby mentioned, this is a one hundred thousand dollar budget amendment. They would go from the stormwater operations fund to the West Tennessee River Basin Department for improvements on North Parkway. And they have received a larger grant that is targeting stormwater improvements throughout the city of Jackson. This project in particular is looking at the Sandy Creek watershed. So the project location is adjacent to Reeves Park and North Parkway Middle School. There's an existing culvert that runs underneath North Parkway at that location. And their larger project is proposing to replace that culvert that runs underneath North Parkway. And so this one hundred thousand dollars would go directly towards that repair replacement. And like Bobby mentioned, this one with the executive director, the President of the Department, provided a few more details about the project as a whole and the grant itself.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The project we have is an NDRC HUD grant that we got for stormwater in Jackson. And it really stems from two thousand ten, two thousand eleven floods. So we're doing a lot of work in these Kudzu gullies, trying to get rid of those and stop erosion and get things more stable. And the total grant was about five point eight million dollars. And it has a ten percent match component, most of which the Basin Authority has completed. But we're looking for opportunities with the city to, you know, shore that up. And this drainage really fits into that, so.
I have a question, if I may. So this is the first, this is the first part of a larger project?
This is a, this is a phase of it. We've completed some work over in Bemis, redoing Kane Creek for drainage around D Street. This is our second phase. This contract's about two point four million dollars.
How many projects are planned for the city of Jackson?
There will be three packages total, it looks like. One is a greenway from Farmer's Market to Bemis. One was Kane Creek in Bemis. And then some are around these Kudzu sand gullies all through the city.
So you'll be bringing those projects back to us for approval like this one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
With respect to, now, I know about North Parkway. Are you doing anything on rural, north rural, any projects planned?
No, sir, not in this project.
Maybe, Mr. Chairman, it'd be another time and another subject matter with respect to New St. Luke area that we have been discussing, trying to get funds for.
Yeah, this project they're doing is for drainage, so we're talking about for sidewalks and mobility. So it'll be two different.
Okay, has there been a, well, I know it's election year, but has there been a, and then put out?
It's gone to something, you know, we're all, it kind of diverted their attention to other things.
I get you. Okay.
And Mayor, very quickly, this is part of our stormwater effort throughout the city. Can you speak to that just briefly?
Yeah, we're, well, this is just one of the big projects. And so we're in the process, as you all know, Dusty's working as our on-call city engineer, in the process of hiring a city engineer. And that'll be one of their number one priorities to assess our stormwater needs. We've amended some of our policies to make sure that we're protecting public right-of-way and public safety first. And so as we go through that with our new city engineer, they can better analyze the needs and so we can know what our need is and how we can best utilize our resources to fund those projects.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, this Dry Creek, is that correct? Is it Dry Creek? Is that the name?
Same.
Sandy, excuse me.
Of course, it's not same.
Okay. How much of the city's area does it span? And should we expect this project to perhaps alleviate some of the stormwater issues that connect to this, this area?
So if you guys are familiar with two thousand ten flooding around like Old Country Auto and things like that, that's where Sandy Creek comes out at. And a big problem with that is there's so much sand and sediment in it that it can't handle big flows. Now, two thousand ten's always going to flood things. But this cuts down a lot of that sand and we're already seeing improvements. We've done some similar projects in the city. And just for way of information, the city is a member of the Basin Authority. So we do a lot of work around the city and Madison County, too.
Any other questions? This is an item on first reading, so open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and three, under budget amendments is Jackson Fire Department Emergency Generator.
This budget amendment would fund both the purchase and the installation of an emergency generator for fire safety and number three, which needs to be replaced.
So moved.
Second. A motion is second. This is an item on first reading. Open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass unanimous.
All right. Get on to second readings. Budget amendments, Jackson Police Department to equip patrol cars.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass unanimous.
Item two is City Hall Insurance Recovery Repair's budget amendment.
So moved.
Motion by Buchanan, second by Brooks.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass unanimous.
Item three is a Jackson Transit Authority AARP grant.
So moved.
Second. A motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass unanimous.
All right. A new business. Thank you, Bobby. Item one is a consideration of approval of an anti-fraud policy. Hold on, Alex Reed to give us an update on that.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
All right, I've had this probably for about four months. This came out of the Budget Committee, a desire to establish an anti-fraud policy. I took the one that was recommended, worked with it through legal and all sorts of means and through MTAS, came up with this. I think this is a very good policy. It kind of delineates what to do. It starts off defining fraud. A lot of people, you know, want to report fraud but may not know when they see it. This is also going to go hand in hand with the hiring of our internal auditor as well as the reporting component to this ethical advocate that's a web-based clearinghouse for fraud reporting. I'll be happy to answer any questions about it. It's pretty clear what to do, when to do it.
And this also doesn't change the process of reporting to the controller as well, if anyone can do. It just streamlines our internal process.
Sure, sure. It doesn't exclude anything. It just kind of streamlines our internal process.
Move the approval.
Have a motion?
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion, any questions? Council, please vote.
Harvey, are you abstaining? Okay. Motion pass unanimous.
Thank you.
Item two is a consideration of a financing resolution. Jackson Fire Department proposed lease purchase agreement on Chiefs Samuel and Frittel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers.
Good morning.
First, I want to say I'm honored and privileged to present the Jackson Fire Department's apparatus lease proposal. I commend Chief Frittel, Mr. Bobby Arnold, and Miss Susan White for their months of hard work and dedication on this proposal. Jackson has historically acquired new apparatus through an outright purchase and has encumbered the entire cost of new apparatus upon delivery and acceptance. Utilization of a lease program will allow our department to acquire new apparatus by spreading the cost of new apparatus over several years with a smaller annual impact to overall budget. Our agent fleet has proven to be far too expensive to maintain. The cost of new apparatus can be staggering. We realize that. We understand that. But it comes down to simple math. Does it cost more to outright purchase or lease? Our current apparatus status and lease proposal would be presented by Chief Frittel.
Thank you, Chief. Created a PowerPoint that I'm going to kind of walk through where we're at and where we would like to go with our apparatus proposal. Before you, on the screen, is a list of all of our units that we have in service. They're considered our frontline pieces of equipment. And you can notice that several of them are overdue. Fifteen years is when we recommend that the apparatus be replaced, and that's a national standard. And what I'd like to do is highlight the ones that are actually past due right now to be replaced. And there's actually eight pieces of equipment that need to be replaced. We're proposing to replace seven pieces of equipment and not to replace the quint at this time. It'd be quint four, which is a combination fire engine and aerial. We are still doing a study to see if we need to replace that piece of equipment with an engine or with a ladder or even possibly a heavy rescue truck in the future. So we didn't feel like it would be wise to replace that piece of equipment at this time. The others that are highlighted in red are the ones that we are requesting to be replaced. And it's a combination of engines and aerial units. So we did a study and over the past six years, we've noticed a tremendous increase in our maintenance costs for apparatus. Thus, last year being one of the highest years in the past with three hundred and seventy thousand dollars being spent on maintenance of equipment. That's to keep the trucks on the road. And we feel like this year is probably going to be equal the amount of last year by the way that we're already starting out. So definitely a huge increase and that's a very high number that we are spending on the maintenance of the apparatus currently. Just to let you know a little bit about what we encounter with our apparatus, the truck that's up on the screen right now, we refer to as Engine sixty-six. It was in the shop, had maintenance being done on it. Our guys picked it up. They were en route back to the station and it broke down. The transmission went out on it. And so we had to have it towed back to the city garage. And the estimate for repair of that truck is roughly around eighteen thousand dollars to have the transmission work on it. We, that repair is currently on hold. We didn't feel like it would be beneficial to put eighteen thousand dollars into this unit. And we have our guys on a reserve truck right now that will be in place of it. So when we do get our new engine in service, which hopefully will be within the next week or two, the one that was just delivered, we're going to replace Engine sixty-six with its sister, which is also twenty-eight years old. So with very high mileage, a hundred and fifty-four thousand miles and roughly a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in six-year maintenance cost. So if you look at those two together, Engine sixty-six has cost us ninety-three thousand over the past six years. And Engine thirty-two has cost us a hundred and thirty-six thousand. So very, very high maintenance costs with these apparatus. And also the age of these apparatus is starting to make it where it's very hard to find parts to repair these units. So what we are requesting is to replace seven pieces of equipment. And if you see the graph up on the screen, the ones with the stars are the ones that we're actually requesting to replace. Some of those units are newer models and we will take the newer models and move them out to some of the remote stations that don't have quite the runs that the inner-city units have. And we're doing that to extend the life period of the apparatus that we currently have. You can see the ones that we will be replacing have the higher run numbers. For example, Engine twelve, which would be the first one, ran one thousand and forty-two calls last year. That's calls for service. And thirteen ran nine hundred and thirteen calls. So that just kind of explains that graph as it is. What we're requesting is to replace five engines total, our tower truck and our ladder truck. And to start from left to right, the two rescue pumpers will go in service. And the big difference between those pumpers and the regular pumpers is there's more storage compartment space on them. So our guys carry the rescue tools, the jaws of life, spreaders, anything to do vehicle extrication or heavy rescue extrication. We need extra storage on that truck to carry those extra tools. So we have two of those units, one at Station One downtown, the other one at Station Five on Van Drive. So we need to replace both of those. The other, the ladder, would be at Station Two on Westwood. And the tower would be at Station Five on Van Drive. And then the three pumpers will be at one, two, and five as well. So in developing this program, we have talked with our local Pierce dealer and we have several options. You'll notice that the trucks that we have up on the screen are red and City of Jackson typically has white trucks. There's a savings with going with the red trucks because they're what they call a stock model. And it's very similar to going to a car dealership. These trucks are sitting on a lot and you can sense pick out the one that you like and the one that's going to fit your needs. But they're mostly red and white. So we had talked about it and with that savings, we felt like it was best just to go with those units. So the problem with the stock units is, like I said, it's very much like going to a car dealership. You can find one that is going to fit your needs, but it's not going to be taken off the market until you have the financing. And that's what we're here for today, to see if we can move forward with this project. When this first started, we did have seven units picked out that were going to fit our needs. But they have since sold. So we will have to have, it looks like right now, we're going to have to have three of the pumpers manufactured for Jackson. And that is, the manufacture time is roughly seven to eight months. The other four units, we can have in here hopefully by the end of this year, if not very shortly afterwards. There is also a cost savings with going with the stock units. That's our preference. Because they're already pre-made, we can pick them out, make sure that they're going to work for us and we can move forward. So the other thing with the manufacturer, with the prepaid, we can do a prepaid on those units and also save some money as well. Long story short, worst-case scenario, if we had to have everything manufactured, we're going to come in under the five million dollar mark. And five million dollars is what we're requesting top. And we're looking to save as much money as we possibly can. So we do not project going over that at all. One of the, one of the key elements with the replacing of these units was to partner or to join HGAC Buy, which is a cooperative purchasing program in Houston Galveston area, a cooperative purchasing, which the city has already entered into an agreement with them. Very similar to a state contract but on a national level. All of the units that we are looking to purchase or lease actually have gone through the bidding process. So we don't have to do a local bid here. And if there's any options that we would like on these units, those have been pre-bid as well. So everything goes through the HGAC Buy program and we can purchase the trucks outright, which allows us to, we want to stick with the similar style trucks that we have. The twenty-eight, the ones that we have on the road right now are twenty-eight years old. They've lasted us, they've done very well. And those are Pierce units and very, very top-quality units. And we feel like we'll get good years of service out of those. We feel like we'll get good years of service out of those. How we are projecting to pay for this is with our current budget, uh, as Mr. Arnold had said, um, we had looked at the savings from our maintenance costs, um, going back and looking at, uh, several of the new units that we purchased, uh, two years, three years ago now. It looks like we're having an average maintenance on those of $5,000 to $7,000. So, uh, we are gonna have a considerable savings in maintenance costs by going with the newer units. The other thing that we looked at was our staffing levels, and, uh, and we have done some reorganization, and, uh, uh, there was a tanker, Tanker Seven, which we discussed earlier on several months ago. Uh, there was really no need to have that continually to be manned and in service. Uh, that unit was put in service, uh, back when they annexed the northwest section of the city, and, uh, and, and it was put in service because they did not have the hydrants in that area. Since then, uh, JEA has added hydrants, and that whole area has adequate water supply. Uh, so, we reorganized, we took those, uh, firefighters from that truck, and we put them in open positions that we currently have in the city. Um, the other is, we have, uh, taken, two of our, uh, apparatus had five personnel on it, and, and four is the standard, so we moved the fifth person from those trucks into open positions in the city as well. Overall, uh, we are looking at manning every piece of equipment in the city with four people, uh, which is the national standard, and, uh, the city has adequate coverage, fire protection coverage, and we feel very comfortable with those staffing levels, uh, being at 162, uh, Uh, as Mr. Arnold had mentioned, um, we are looking at, uh, going with PNC financing. Um, and Mr., that's actually Mr. Arnold's, uh, area. Uh, he has done a great job of, uh, evaluating, um, what would be the Fire Department and the city's best route to go, and, uh, it, the, uh, total payment, as he had mentioned, is, is roughly $577,000, uh, which we can, uh, make the payment, uh, within our current budget this year, so, and subsequent years as well. To cap it off, uh, we're being very creative in, uh, in, in how we're able to move the Fire Department ahead. We're, we're looking at, uh, we're very, um, conscious of, of spending the taxpayers' money. Uh, I'm a taxpayer as well, and, uh, and we want to make sure that taxpayers are getting, uh, the most for their money, and we're, we're being very conservative with the use of the funds. So, if, uh, the lease is, uh, approved, uh, we will, uh, replace the fire engines. We will be selling those, uh, units on GOV deals, and we would like to use the proceeds to put into a fund to buy our firefighters a second set of turnout gear, uh, to help combat cancer, uh, for our firefighters. Uh, cancer is a, a, a very hot, uh, topic in the fire service right now, and protecting our firefighters is of utmost importance. Um, so, we are going to use the proceeds from the sale of the trucks to help buy a second set of turnout gear. Therefore, if they're fighting a fire, they're not having to put on dirty gear to go on to the next call. Not only does that benefit our firefighters, but that also benefits the public as well. Um, you know, we don't want to be walking into somebody's house, uh, with a dirty set of turnout gear on. So, um, that's, uh, that's basically the, the plan in a nutshell. Um, we feel very comfortable. We've been studying this for, uh, going on six months now, and, uh, we feel like this is the best plan for the city.
This lease proposal overall continues the city's fiscally sound and conservative approach to managing our taxpayers' dollars. The process has proven to be challenging, but it's not insurmountable. Mayor and council, thank you for your consideration and your attention with this matter.
Thank you, Chiefs. Any questions?
I have a question, if I may, and it's surely, uh, I appreciate, uh, your leadership, uh, Chief Samuels, um, in this matter, and I'm surely not here to question whether or not, uh, the city needs this equipment. Uh, my question is more of a procedural one, um, and, and that is, did, did you present this during, during the budget hearings as a part of your capital budget for the year?
Last year, we, uh, presented a five-year plan, and, uh, it was not acted on. Uh, since then, we've had considerable, uh, maintenance costs, and it has proven to be too much to, uh, ask the taxpayers to spend on, I mean, if we put an engine and a $30 piece of equipment, it's still 30-years-old.
Yeah. I, I, I understand that, and I'm, I'm not here to question that at all. I, I trust your expertise and, and your staff on that. That's not where I'm, I'm coming from at all. It's just a procedural question.
We had a, we had a five-year plan, and that was not acted on.
Counsel, if you remember, we, we scrapped our capital budget altogether, with the exception of road maintenance from the, from the state grant.
Right. And I just wanted that on the record, that this has not been presented, uh, as part of a capital plan.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say thank you so much for everything that you all have done, everyone that was involved, and how creative you all were in to bring this where the city taxpayers can see how important it is and how we need to move on that. And, um, if there's no more discussion, I would like to make a motion to move and to approve this.
Second.
And then, Mr. Chairman, then, may we also, if it's appropriate, where, uh, Council Pickens brought up the necessity to make sure we're doing this in a timely manner, so we can make sure that we're getting this at the lowest cost without losing the products that are available.
Yes. It, it is, not at this moment, I will, we'll make that at the end of the meeting. We'll make that appropriate.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, we have a motion and a second on the, uh, the proposed lease purchase agreement for the Jackson Fire Department. Any further discussion or questions?
My, my last question is, uh, Chief Samuel, so this, this proposal, this is within your budget now?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So, uh, from, from your slide, Chief Frittel, looked like we had approximately $120,000 potentially in maintenance savings that you had found, and then another $590,000 in potential salary savings from your restructuring. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, um, that, that exceeds, obviously, the, the cost, uh, of the lease. Uh, could we, are, are we, is the Fire Department committing towards those, uh, that restructuring? And I know the maintenance is a hard thing to pin down, uh, but i- is that a commitment that the Fire Department has for the next 10 years on the life of this lease?
Yes, unless we experience tremendous growth in the city and, uh, it's possible for us to need, uh, additional fire stations. That is correct.
Uh, and, and I guess we need to go ahead and start thinking, how many apparatus do we have at present?
Uh, we have about 40 apparatus, uh, support and frontline equipment.
And, and so, I guess the next question this would lead to is, we need to go ahead and start planning on what those ne- the next phase of this is. Obviously, we can't solve this problem now and then have to deal with it again in five, 10 years.
That is correct, and we are working on a five-year to 10-year plan.
And, and also to note off of, uh, Councilman, uh, Brooks's question, this was a part of that five-year capital plan that you presented, uh, as well as aligns with the goals of the Budget Committee to, uh, make operational funds available for these types of endeavors. So, I would support it as well.
Thank you.
Only thing I want to say is, you see this bunch of firefighters sitting back here? We owe it to them to make sure that we get this done, because there's no point in us putting firefighters out on apparatus, rolling down the streets of Jackson that might break down, have an accident. I don't want to go to some firefighter's funeral because a truck broke down and he was killed in an accident. I don't see how we can do anything but approve this. Thank you, Councilman Pickens.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight, zero.
All right. Thank you, Chiefs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item three is a consideration of an approval of sale of surplus property. Now, Mr. Arnold, back up.
There are, uh, four lots, uh, that the city owns that are deemed to be surplus property for the city. Went through the normal process that we do with these lots. We had certain, uh, people interested in making a bid on these lots. Uh, we ended a public notification of what the bid was and opened it up for, uh, anybody who wanted to, uh, be involved in the process, and, uh, this will put these properties back on the tax roll and also will save the city some maintenance, uh, costs.
Move the approval.
Have a motion is our second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right. And go move, you remember, item four is taken off the agenda. Item five, board appointments, uh, reappointment of Bob Franklin to the Airport Authority Board.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right. And then, have an appointment of Councilmember Johnny Dodd to replace Councilman Ernest Brooks to the Budget Committee.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
There's, and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed.
Item six is consideration of a report of budget amendments, same fund, $10,000 or less. And can counsel, remember, we discussed this as part of our policies and procedures for budget amendments moved around in the same fund, uh, to report it to the council. There is no need to, to vote on this item, just because it's an information purpose Item seven is consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right. And before we do adjourn today, um, we'll go ahead, we'll send the, we'll send the public meeting, public meeting notice out officially this afternoon, but we're going to have a, um, special called meeting Tuesday, October 13th, 9:00 a.m. Uh, this will be one item on the agenda of the second reading for the budget amendment for the, the lease purchase agreement. Um, and that'll be at nine o'clock, and we'll do that, uh, just by go-to meeting. We'll send the notifications out for everyone so they can log in for that. Uh, that'll be nine o'clock next Tuesday, October 13th. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Did, not figure your work schedule?
No. But it, that is virtual, though.
Yeah, it'll be virtual, yes.
It's harder for you to try to say.
Yeah, it'll be, the item will be the budget amendment from the first reading for the Fire Department, yes. All right. Nothing else coming forth, counsel? Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
You hit a five.